We call the meeting to order. We'll start out with the parents.
Sure, be glad to. Let's pray. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, would you so humbly come before you once again this evening, Lord? Lord, we ask your blessing upon our meeting, Lord, and I pray for strength and wisdom for our board members as they make decisions that affect our county, Lord. Lord, be with all those in the county that are sick and afflicted, Lord, those that have lost loved ones. Lord, just be with those that are impacted by the federal shutdown, Lord. I just pray that reconciliation would be reached and things would get back to normal, Lord. Lord, it's all these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Would you please, if you want, let us in please tonight?
Praise the heavens to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He couldn't remember which one of us, so he just told you.
He couldn't remember which one of us, but he did not, so you gave it.
Next, we're down to approval of the minutes. In the regular meeting, September 23rd, 2025.
Even though one has any questions, I make a motion that we approve our last minute's meetings, or minutes.
I second it.
Motion is second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As well. Approval of the agenda. We do all of them together tonight.
Mr. Chair, on our agenda, we have no additions or corrections or anything, so the agenda is as printed that we're asking to be approved, so.
I make a motion that we approve our agenda.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
As well.
If there's no question, I make a motion that we do all the consent agenda from A through H with one motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, and the motion is second to do A through H all together, all in favor?
Aye.
As well. Takes down the public comment. Sturgill will read our public comment.
Be happy to. There shall be a time limit for each individual speaker of three minutes. A representative of a group may have up to five minutes to make a presentation. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of his or her presentation. Speakers are not permitted to donate time to other speakers. No speaker's time shall be extended except by unanimous consent or a two-thirds vote of the board members present. Prohibited conduct. Persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity, use language which insults or demeans any person, and/or when directed at public official or employee when not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualification of public figures, make frivolous statements, interrupt other speakers, or engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting, engage in behavior that intimidates others, or address the board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, or affairs of the county.
All right, if anyone would like to make a public comment, you can come up to the podium. Anyone who would like to call in, number 276-333-0357.
Everybody jump up if you want.
You want?
I said don't want everybody to jump up if you want.
Yeah. Again, the number to call in is 276-333-0357.
No calls.
No call. Nobody's coming up to the podium, we don't have any calls.
Make a motion that we close comment, public comment, excuse me.
All right, we have a motion to close.
Second.
In a second. All in favor of close public comment?
Aye.
Now, we're down to the appointments. First one is the Behavioral Health Services Board. We got two tonight.
We have two on that, and they will need to be considered separately since these are our appointments. We need to open up the floor for nominations, and then, of course, we'll vote on them in the order received, so.
I would like to nominate Kathy Harrison to serve one more three-year term, which will be the limit that she can serve from my district.
Do we need to do these one at a time?
Yeah.
I have talked to her, and she is willing to serve.
I make a motion that we close the nominations, then, if there's none more.
Motion to close.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
People serve another three-year term.
Well, see, I made a motion to close the nomination. You have to close the nomination, right?
Yeah.
You can, the chair can close, or.
They can, it can be either way.
Either way.
Yes.
What's wrong with my computer?
Next, we have the at-large.
Mr. Chair, just go ahead and say, let's go ahead and vote on Ms. Harrison.
You have to vote on it.
I know that was what we thought we were doing, but just for the minutes, we'll go ahead and do that again.
All in favor of Ms. Harrison being reappointed?
Aye.
As well. Now, we're down to the at-large.
I nominate Bobby Hammons.
It's cause you had a conversation with the executive director, and Mr. Hammons is willing to serve, and everyone's serving in Craig.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Kevin Mullins sent me a message today and said Bobby Hammons is up for reappointment as an at-large member. He would like to remain on for a final term.
I second it.
You don't have to second it, do you? You just have to.
You don't have to second it.
It's not required, you can, but at the same time, it's not required.
Want to make a motion to close nominations?
I make a motion that we close nominations.
Oh, Jesus.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to close nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As well. We'll go ahead and vote on Mr. Hammons. Do we have a nomination, or somebody want to make a motion that we reappoint him?
I make that motion that we reappoint him as per Chris Hauser's nomination.
Second.
I second it, you have to second that too.
All in favor?
Aye.
As well. We're down to new business. Start out with surplus property.
No, we got the Luntz and Pine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one then.
That's okay.
Luntz and Pine Regional Industrial Facilities Authority.
Mr. Chair, on this, Ms. Cronkite, Dana Cronkite's term expires December 31st, 2025, and she is eligible to serve another four-year term. And the way that the Luntz and Pine, the RIF, works generally, the county administrator and economic development director serve, that's how it's generally set up, it's not required to be that way, but that's the way it's generally set up. So, and she is interested in serving again.
Well, I nominate Dana Cronkite to serve another four-year term.
Any other nomination?
Then, Mr. Chair, you can just close and then take a vote on.
Close the nominations then. We have a motion for Dana Cronkite to be reappointed.
Aye. You don't need a motion, do you?
No.
All in favor of Dana? Dana reappointed, as well.
Now, you're down.
Now, we're down to surplus property on new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on the surplus property. You'll have before you six vehicles that we have, looks like three from the sheriff's office, two from litter control, and one for maintenance. All of these, we've listed the condition, the issues, the mileage, and everything with them. And we're asking to permission, we're asking you guys to declare these surplus and then give us permission to dispose of them in the manner that we normally do. And what we've been doing lately is listing them on govdeals, and that's an online auction site that governments put their surplus property on and sell. And we've done better on that than advertising in the local paper and on Facebook, so.
I make a motion that we put those up for surplus property and give the administrator the authority to put them on government.gov.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Willis.
You have to have second on that or not? Because I second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second to put the surplus property on govdeals.com, or gov, whatever it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As well. Next, we got the Operation Green Light proclamation.
Mr. Chair, if I might on this, this is something, this will be the fifth year that this has been done. And, of course, Dickinson County, we're a member of NACO, the National Association of Counties, and they sent us this proclamation and asked us to consider this. We've not done this before, I think it's a good thing to recognize our veterans. And if it's okay with the board, I'd like to read this in for the benefit of the public and sort of go into our minutes to read this proclamation today, so. So, this is the Board of Supervisors of Dickinson County, Virginia, Operation Green Light for Veterans 2025 Proclamation. Whereas the residents of Dickinson County, Virginia, have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Dickinson County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members across more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans. And whereas Dickinson County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County. Dickinson County hereby declares November 4th through the 11th, 2025, as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that Dickinson County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through the 11th, 2025, dated this 28th day of October, 2025, by the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors. We have a lot of veterans in the county, and, you know, we all have the utmost respect, and I think this is very honoring towards them, so.
Be a good time to advertise our breakfast also.
Think it would, to put a plug in for it, Ms. Willis.
I think it would be a good time to say that we have a breakfast at the Board of Supervisors' place for, for the veterans on November the 7th, at nine o'clock, from 9:00 to 11:00, in the room right in front of the treasurer's office that we've been using for several years. So, we'd like to invite all the veterans to come out.
Yes, definitely, it's a good event.
It's a good time to do it.
Most definitely, it is.
While you're doing that.
That's great.
I make a motion we adopt this Operation Green Light proclamation.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Adopt this very important proclamation, all in favor?
Aye.
As well. Next, we're down to the dress code.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, of course, we have a proposed update to the Dickinson County Employee Dress Code Policy. And I'll say, you know, this dress code would apply to the departments directly under the Board of Supervisors. It wouldn't impact our constitutional officers or anything like that. It would basically be, you know, my office, building, IT, rental assistance, our public works as far as, you know, our solid waste, litter control, maintenance, tourism, you know, all the county agencies is what it would impact. And this is just a step in order to try to increase our professionalism a little bit, try to be a better representative of the county. I know this has been shared with you all ahead of time. I'll try to answer any questions you got, or, you know, if the board wants to change anything in it or whatever the board might want to do. But, of course, you know, we've got it broken down between our office staff, our solid waste maintenance, animal control, litter control, and then our building inspectors and other field inspection staff, so.
Any questions, Mr. Barton?
Is this going to, are we going to have to purchase them something to, with the county in the money?
We will for our folks that are going out of the offices representing the county, like as far as our building department, our rental assistance department that are going out and doing inspections of people's homes. I think it's a little more professional whenever they show up as far as being, you know, branded with the county, and they need to wear their county ID whenever they're going to identify themselves because the day and age we're living in, a lot of the homes and stuff, you know. It's like the sheriff's office, and whenever they go to people's homes, you know, it's clear to tell that they're a deputy. We need to be able to tell that we're on official business from the county when we come. So, for, you know, for the employee's safety and just for, you know, a little more professionalism as well.
So, you're going to buy, like, shirts? And, you know, really, they're going to have to have jackets.
A jacket as well, for cool weather, so they'll be identified with that.
Because it would cover up the shirt.
Yes. That's what's in the proposal, so.
Okay.
And, again, we can make any changes that the board so desires, but.
But it just affects our employees.
Yeah, it's just our employees.
I'm going to go over it, I think it looks appropriate, what you've got. Want to make a motion, any more questions? Anybody got any more questions? Mr. Barton on this?
No questions.
No, I think it's a good idea. I would make a motion to accept it.
I second it.
Got a motion in a second. Approve the dress code update. All in favor?
Aye.
Got the camera software.
Yes.
Licenses and service agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Of course, we have our commissioner here with us, may I have a word to have any questions with this? But basically, with the software upgrade that we're doing countywide right now with RDA, this is the second piece of software that we're having to implement for the whole package that comes in. This would be specific to the Commissioner's revenues office, and it has to do with the real estate side as far as when it comes to how they appraise those properties, and it ties the pictures back together and the drawings of the homes on the lots and stuff. And this is with Concise software. Mr. Sturgill has helped with the procurement of this. And our commissioner, Mr. Mullins, has reached out to several other commissioners around the state that using this software would be a big improvement from what we're using right now and make their office a lot more efficient. We will have to change from our current software since it is tied with the other software that we're changing from, so. Ms. Willis, I've learned a lot about it since we talked yesterday, and I'm trying to explain to you what it was, so.
Oh, excuse me. So, this is going to cost the county part?
This is part of the ARPA funds that we had set, the former ARPA fund set aside for this.
Okay, that answers it.
scroll down to payment schedule.
I think it's need, very well needed.
Does you want Shelley to explain it to the rest of them? I talked to Shelley today. Do you want?
The board would like you to explain what it is.
Just briefly, the Concise, the Cam is a computer aided mass appraisal system. We're getting away from rights. This is new technology, it's more modern. As I was telling Shelby, and I was telling Larry, we can go in and make changes. So, right now, when we go in with the old software we have, we have to jump out of so many screens in order to make change to the real estate. We have to adjust an appraisal. Say if someone calls and says, well, they, you know, took a porch off their house, or we need to, you know, redo that. With this new Concise Cam, it's more modernized, it's all on one screen. We can make the changes, click a button, and it's live update. When we pull up that parcel, if it's a home, there's a lot of homes that people call and have complaints about. So, lots of times, you know, I try to find out where it is. Sometimes you've got homes that look alike, so, you know, during the reassessment, they take photos. So, it will pull up the photo to the house so you know what you're looking at, you know, to be a better understanding of what they have, where it's at. Really, it really help our office, make us more efficient, and we're proud of it, you know, so.
Thank you, Shelley. So, I make a motion that we allow the commissioner's office to get this with our ARPA funds that we saved to upgrade our computers we.
Second. Got a motion in a second.
Chris already seconded it. You seconded.
Oh, did you hear him?
I didn't hear him, we might just pick up Chris.
I hear you.
I heard you, Richard.
We got a motion in a second, all in favor of the software purchase?
Aye.
As well. Down to the closed meeting.
That's fine.
How do you want to take us in?
It's your job.
Yeah.
It's your job.
Is that my job?
It is.
I make a motion that we go into closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A, 1 and 5, Section 2.2-3711A, 1. I personnel, 1, all departments, including solid waste. B, Section 2.2-3711A, 5. I, Economic Development, 1, Economic Development update. Will second it?
Got a motion in a second, close meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
As well.
I make a motion. Whereas the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors that a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as identified in the motion convening the closed meeting was heard, discussed, or considered by the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors.
Second on that?
I'll second it.
Motion and second. Certification for closed meeting.
Go call.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Willis?
Aye.
Slush?
Aye.
Any matters coming out discussed in the closed meeting?
Yeah, I've got a motion. I move that the Board of Supervisors accept the interview committee's recommendations for hiring the part-time solid waste position and authorize the county administrator to extend a conditional offer of employment.
I'll second it.
Motion and second. Mr. Hall's motion to hire the recommendation of the ironborn. All in favor?
Aye.
I as well. And supervisor comments. Ms. Slush, you want to start us off tonight?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody. I want to congratulate the scholastic team at Ridge View for how good they're doing and the band. And I listened to the chorus the other night and that was very good singing. It was very good. I thought it was impressive. And I want to send my condolences out to those who've lost loved ones to death. I think Debbie Mullins passed. There might have been someone else, Muncie. Muncie Mullins passed. He was a good football player for Clintwood High School back in the day. And I want to wish everybody a safe and happy Halloween. Be careful.
I really don't have a lot of comments. I'd just like to wish everybody to come out to our Veterans Breakfast. The Veterans are, it picks up a little bit every year now. I really support that. And Chris does a good job with that also helping to get some prizes to give away and some door prizes. And also just thank all my board members and thank my sweet husband for staying with me 61 years this week.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The 24th. We spend it in church.
Couldn't do anything better.
Mr. Scott?
Just like to thank everybody who comes out to our meetings, who watches us. We'd like to see more of a crowd to come out and be partakers of what we're doing in the county. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I wear my pink tonight in honor of my daughter that was diagnosed with breast cancer at the age of 37. And anybody who can go and walk in a cancer walk with these people, it's emotional to see and listen to them speak at their meetings what they've overcome and how even though they've gone through all their treatments and they say they're clear, how it still touches them every day of their lives wondering. They still have that thought, will this come back somewhere? And just, it's been a blessing. I went to UVA Wise and walked in and walked with her over there. And it so happened to be on mine and Hunter's anniversary, but we chose to go be with her. So, and just like to, and everybody that's watching, I noticed the town of Clintwood has changed their trick or treat from Thursday night to Saturday evening. So, everybody can come out to that. Thank all my board members. Thank us for, thank all you and us for moving forward with our meeting and working together like we have.
Mr. Hall?
Just like to invite everybody to the Veterans Breakfast. If you know a veteran, please let them know that we're having this and get them out here. You know, we want to serve them, let them know we appreciate them. And if anybody that wants to participate in the green light thing, you know, put a green light up on your house or your business, you know, let's show them some appreciation. They gave a lot. Lot of them gave off. Everybody have a safe Halloween and go vote.
Yes.
All right. Like down to me, I'd like to thank our first responders who's here tonight. Today is First Responder Appreciation Day. And I want to thank all of our first responders in the county. Heritage Hall had a very nice lunch today for first responders. They had several people go out there. It was very nice. I just want to thank all of them for the hard work that they do and the turmoil that they endure. We had a very bad incident in Haystack yesterday and we lost a young man way too early in his life to an accident. And our first responders worked really hard down there to try to save the young man. Unfortunately, it was not saved. Other than that, everybody have a safe Halloween. Welcome them all out to the Veterans Breakfast like everybody else. Like all the board members, I think we've, we all try to work together and get along and do the best that we can for the county. I just thank everybody. And thank Mr. Barton for all the hard work he does keeping us updated and on task.
Keeps all the fires put out.
Can I read this? "I was given this thank you note probably two months ago and can never think to read it. One night I didn't get it out of my bag, one night I had it in my calendar and didn't get it out. But this is a, this was given to me in Food City one day. It says Rhonda, Peggy, Shelby, and Richard, what would we do without generous donors like you? On behalf of the Clintwood Lions Club, we want to express our deepest gratitude for helping us continue our mission and fulfill Donnie's vision to reach as many in our community as possible. Your support is a testament to your compassion and commitment to making a difference in the lives of others. We are truly thankful for your contribution. Clintwood Lions Club in love and memory of Donnie Wright." And I told, it was probably from at golf tournament because I have had this for a while and could never remember to read it. But I was asked to read it at a board meeting, so.
Thank you for doing that. All right, we have a motion adjourned?
Make a motion adjourned.
I'll second it.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
I as well.